Get randomly say, oh, it's okay.
I'd like to call this meeting Devoter. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Try to get me.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item C, adjustment to the agenda.
Yes, for the board's consideration, have one item we'd like to add to the agenda under new business. It is HCTC Facility Feasibility Study Committee update.
I move that we add the HCTC Feasibility Study Committee update to the agenda under item J, new business.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing then, all those in favor? Five oh, thank you. Item D, approval of minutes for December tenth, two thousand nineteen.
Make a motion to approve the minutes, December tenth, two thousand nineteen.
A second. Discussion. All those in favor? Correspondence and communications.
I had one formal letter of retirement, which I have shared with the board, and I will take up in my report.
Item F, public participation. Item G, board reports. Mr. Clifford.
Good evening, you have my report. Couple of quick things, so empty bowl supper, and I know some of you were there and some of you brought food. And it was a tremendous success. A lot of bowls to choose from, for sure. And how much was the final count, eight hundred and?
As of now, it was close to eight hundred.
Yeah, it's close to eight hundred, which is the most we've ever raised. So it was a terrific night and great job by our department to organize that and get that ready. Student of the Month recipients, EHS Student of the Month was Rachel Barnes. VPA Student of the Month was Seneca Maddox Wilbur. And Rachel's challenge student was Aurora Burmeister. And they were identified at a December twentieth schoolwide assembly, right before break was over, right before the start of break, excuse me. And what's not on your board report are eighth grade visits. So myself and guidance counselors and some teachers. So we start recruiting next week. It starts for the class of twenty twenty-four. And so Tuesday, January twenty-first, next Tuesday, we'll go to Cave Hill and Blue Hill Consolidated. Then Wednesday, January twenty-second, we go to the Trenton School in LeMoyne. Thursday, the twenty-third, we go to EEMS in Surrey. And then Monday, January twenty-seventh, that'll be our last day. We host Beach Hill students at Ellsworth High School. And we go to Hancock Grammar to complete our visits. And so we'll have a decent idea of the number for the incoming freshmen, but we're guessing probably around one hundred and twenty-five. So it's a decent sized crew coming in next year. We're excited to have them. And then in March will be our eighth grade step up night, and I'll give you that exact date and time next month. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Gabbiannelli?
Good evening. It's nice to see all of you, happy new year.
Same to you.
Thank you. On December eleventh, Mrs. Brown and Mrs. Kellogg hosted a wonderful winter concert, featuring our beginner band, our concert band, our jazz band, and middle school chorus. It was a fantastic evening, the students did a fantastic job performing, and I think everyone really thoroughly enjoyed themselves. So that was very lovely. Our student ambassadors are still sponsoring their project, Keep Warm. It's actually going to wrap up tomorrow, and then we are going to be donating all of the items collected, the hats, scarves, mittens, to local agencies. On January seventh, our sixth graders visited HCTC to explore some of the programs that are offered there. All of our students came back excited and talking about all the things they had learned. They got to set some things on fire, so that was really cool for them, in the culinary program. What was it, flan or flambé or something? I don't know, it was, the kids were really, really excited. So a big thank you to Mrs. Bowles and her staff for hosting our sixth grade students. It was a great opportunity for all of them. And during the two weeks leading up to winter break, our Friends of Rachel Club asked students to write down acts of kindness. They had strips of paper, and they were to write down acts of kindness that they either performed or received. It was kind of like a kindness challenge. And in the two weeks leading up to break, they collected two hundred and forty-four acts of kindness and have created chain links, and those are on display in our hallway at EEMS. So pretty awesome, two hundred and forty-four for two weeks. So we're still working hard at that. We hosted our very first chess meet on January eighth. We are getting into cheering competition season. Their first competition is January twenty-fourth. Our playoffs for basketball will begin on January thirty-first. Seventh and eighth grade art club underway, and jazz band is meeting regularly every Tuesday and Thursday. So we are very, very busy at EEMS. We had a PTF meeting today in the library at three. It's every second Tuesday of the month at three o'clock in our library, if people want to join. And progress reports will be going home on January twenty-seventh. Any questions?
Not a question, but a comment.
Oh.
I was at the December eleventh holiday concert, and I was really impressed. And so many people were talking in the audience about how great the students sounded. And so kudos to Mrs. Brown and Mrs. Kellogg. And it was really great to see Mr. Claudio there. I know he's connecting with some of the middle school musicians and inviting them to participate in pep band, which I think is so awesome.
I believe some of them are there tonight, maybe?
Yeah, so I just, I just, it's really wonderful what's happening in the music world, in both the middle school and the high school, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Lewis.
Yeah, are you ready?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mrs. Lewis. Happy birthday to you.
Gotcha.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I have had a great, a wonderful birthday today, and you've read my report, so I don't need to deal with that. Pardon?
Nice boa.
Well, let me tell you something. And there's more to this, but I'll tell you what happened this morning when I walked through the door. There were balloons and there were all kinds of things going on down the hallway, thanks to Ms. Gabbiannelli, of course. But when I went through the door, I thought, oh, my gosh, it feels so good to be here. And all day long, everything that happened, I thought, this is what we want for kids, every single day, for them to feel like it doesn't have to be their birthday to love coming through that door. They sent cards, they brought cards, and they were all, we talk about kindness starts with me. But when you saw their smiles and you saw what they wrote in their cards and their hearts were right out there, that's what tells you what's happening. It happened that it was my birthday today, but we celebrate things every single day there. Erica just gave you the long list of activities that go on there. And I wrote in my report about the frequency with which our facility is used. The taxpayers in Ellsworth are getting their money's worth, because it's not just about kids. It's not just about the grownups that work there. It's about a whole community pulling together and having a place to pull together. When you talk about the concerts and the professionalism of the students, it's clear we're serious about our work, but we know how to make learning fun. And we do that day in and day out. And for all of us, anything that's fun is absorbed more easily. You're more motivated to do well at it, you do your very best. And some of the cards that the kids sent today are just messages, not just to me, but about them, about what kind of space they are in and how things are going for them. It was amazing. The question was, you're how old? And I said, okay, everybody, we gotta do more work on the reading. And one little boy in fourth grade walked away saying, is she seventy? I thought she was only fifty-four. And I said to the teacher, does he have really good number sense? And she said, no, fifty-four was a great guess. That's fantastic. But this is one of the other things I want every kid to say every day, my best day ever. It doesn't have to be their birthday, it has to be the morning they walk through the doors at EEMS. It's how I felt all day long today, and that's the kind of thing that feeds passion for the people who work there and the kids who learn there. And for all the other people in the community who get the opportunity to come in and see our kids sing, play basketball games, whatever's going on. But you have a wonderful, wonderful place, and it's not just a facility. It's a home. I hear Rebecca Wright talking about needing to make sure kids are fed and that they have a place to stay every night. Those are considerations that every administrator in this district takes home with them every single night. But it is a wonderful thing on the days when kids are seeing adults are joyous and happy and that our school is not just a place where you go and everybody's going to learn, blah, 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 blah. It's a place where we live, and it's a wonderful place to learn and grow. So tonight, thank you for singing Happy Birthday, and thank you for being the school board that supports the environment that helps the kids. So thank you very much, and I love having your birthday.
Thanks. Mrs. Bowles.
That's a hard act of honor.
I was gonna say, I respectfully request that I not go after Kathy Lewis every single month.
Right?
What if we got you a tear?
So you've also read my report. First, thank you to the community and to those of you that were able to come to our Holiday Buffet. We had one of our largest crowds, I say that I feel like every year, with about a hundred and forty people coming to our restaurant for the Holiday Buffet. So we appreciate that support. Like Mrs. Gabbiannelli said, our middle school grant affords us the opportunity to host countywide sixth graders at our school, and this year we're doing it the month of January. We've had about a hundred and fifty-four sixth graders come through the school so far. We've hosted Ellsworth, Connors Emerson, we've had Trenton and Mount Desert Elementary School. We have six more scheduled to come and six more we're working on scheduling, so that when January's over, we can say all of Hancock County's come through and we can start focusing on Skills USA, which, believe it or not, is right around the corner. Our Go Cyber Security competition is starting to heat up. Those of you that were here last year know that we participated last year and did quite well the first time we ever competed in this. So we're currently in the process of registering girls at HCTC that want to participate in this competition and learn a little bit more about coding and computer science. So we're providing that opportunity again. We hosted our annual Hancock County Leadership Breakfast on January ninth, and we had leaders from all over Hancock County, superintendents, curriculum coordinators, board members, high school principals, and high school guidance counselors. We do this annually to talk about what's ahead for HCTC for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. So we were able to talk about program changes for our current programs. We talked about our two new programs, so that schools and guidance counselors are ready to answer questions about cybersecurity and hospitality, travel, and tourism. And we also talked about the new application process we're going to use this year for HCTC. So we'll begin going on the road, or I will, beginning of February, and going to all of the local high schools to meet with all freshmen and sophomores and interested juniors to talk about the new application cycle. And applications for HCTC will be due March thirteenth this year and be available online for the first time, which we're really excited about. I wanted to highlight some exciting news about our, an alumni from our biomedical program, a student from Bucksport High School who's a freshman at UNE, was given the opportunity as a freshman to be an intern in the neurology lab down there with one of their scientists and professors, which doesn't typically happen your fall semester or freshman year. But they loved the research she did in our biomedical program. A professor liked it, and she's now published. She has been published in the Frontiers in Cellular Neuroscience Scientific Magazine. I've attached the link, and we'll post it on our website and Facebook page, so that people can see that. So that's now something she can add to her resume, which is pretty high kudos for our freshman in college to be published already. Finally, before break, I was super excited to learn. We had applied for what's called the Systems Innovation Grant through the Melmac Foundation, and we were told we were not only awarded the grant, but we received the highest score in the state for the grant. This is going to give us twenty thousand dollars this year, twenty thousand dollars next year, and ten thousand dollars the following year, so for a total of fifty. This is going to allow us to do some innovative pilot programs to see what works for our county, including trying to do some ninth grade programming at EHS, possibly through the ESS program. We're looking at an after-school experience for fifth graders and looking at really how can we comprehensively offer CTE for middle schoolers. And finally, the big news is our summer camp, we will do this summer, will be free for kids because of the work of this grant. So we'll offer CTE camps this summer for students in middle school, and we'll do some career exploratory camps like we did last summer. But I also have staff that want to do specialty camps. So kids can, if they're interested in media, come do a media camp for three or four days for free. So we're really super excited that we were able to receive these grants and have these kinds of opportunities available for our county middle schoolers. Any questions?
Thanks.
Good evening. Curriculum news. Our curriculum instruction and assessment team met yesterday to view a presentation given by Alexis Chapman, first grade teacher at EEMS. She's been working with a digital portfolio program called Seesaw in her classroom and taught our CIA members about the program, as she's done in the past at our Never Stop Learning sessions. Our CIA team is looking at the possibility of piloting this program in some classrooms over the rest of the year to better understand what its capabilities are. Teachers who have used it before are able to have students post their work to digital folders in their name, where teachers can grade them, review them, reshare them with other students who, as examples, and also with their comments. This particular program spans grades K through twelve and could store exemplars of student work throughout their career in Ellsworth. We're interested in teachers being able to look when they get new students at the beginning of the year and look back at their body of work over the course of their time in Ellsworth. Seesaw is one program that can do that, and we're looking at that as we had brought it to the school through the Momentum Program in kindergarten through third grade over the last few years. Also at the high school, they use Google Classroom, and that has some capacity to do the same kind of things. So this year, our focus for the CIA team is to explore how digital portfolios could be implemented. And actually, we're going to also hope to invite our VPA team, because I know that they are using them already in the work that they do. So very happy that Leah is on our curriculum committee and hopefully can give us some guidance on that. Title One enrichment, our Title One students in the after-school program not only learn targeted skills in small groups and get exercise and have close one-on-one attention from the two teachers and two ed techs who teach the program, but every month we also invite presenters and artists to bring experiential learning to the students. Usually we do this during the time that teachers have their staff meetings, and so it brings in an activity for them to focus on with support. This year, Michelle Lahey led a yoga program with them in October and November. And last week, Eric Rudolph was a main warden and also the husband of Kelly Rudolph in Title One and a father of his daughter in kindergarten.
And the son of Laura Rudolph.
I'm sorry?
The son of Laura Rudolph.
And the son of Laura Rudolph, right? We just, he's embedded, right? He came and did a nature program for the kids, which is something they look forward to every year. And February and March, talented artist Melissa Ryu will guide our students through a two-part sculpture project. I know she works with adult ed, and I know several people have worked with her, and she's wonderful. Also in April, Grayson from Birds Acre will visit with his owls, which the kids are very excited about. They requested him in particular. And in May, Nicole Cardano from Theater Today and the Grand Theater will come and do improvisational games with the kids. We know that students learn best when they're able to make connections through math and literacy and social studies, science, STEM projects, and the arts. And with these enrichment visits, we hope that we're able to provide more opportunities for students. A lot of families can't go out to theater and have those cultural experiences, so we try to bring them in. It was, I visited the after-school program today and was sitting with them, watching some of the things they were doing in the library. And one of the students who presented for you a couple of months ago, he came up to me and he said, I have a list of things that we need. And I said, okay. And so they started talking about all the things, they want more books, and they'd like to have more time on computers or iPads, and they have apps that they think would help them learn better. And then he looked at all the teachers, and he's an old soul. He looked at all the teachers and he said, do you need binders? Should we ask her for binders? And they're like, no, we're good with the binders. He goes, do you need pencils? Do we have enough pencils? Funny. So he was just, he was just figured that he should grab my, you know, my chance, why I was here. So I am very excited that the kids are so invested in the program, that they're thinking themselves how to make it better every day. So we're very proud of that program, and the kids are doing a great job. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Higgins?
Isn't Annie here? Annie.
Annie's there.
Annie.
She's not on the.
Ms. Sergeant, you're not on here, hello?
You've just been re-added to the agenda.
I have been absent for a bit. Sorry.
That's all right. Bear with me, I have a little bit of a cough. But I'm very excited to announce that we have a new team member. Amanda Day joined our team to support our enrichment and workforce training programs, as well as to serve as a high set examiner, both at our site and at the Hancock County Jail. She brings a background in advocacy and social work, as well as administrative support. And her passion is connecting people with resources to gain self-sufficiency. She's actually already been out on the road handing out our catalogs in all different places, and she added about ten more sites to our regular distribution list, so she's off to a great start. I think a couple of people mentioned that our catalog arrived today. I think it arrived today in the mail. It's about two weeks later than we always hope it would come out, but they had some difficulties at the printer. But we're glad that it's out and about. And as always, I send out kudos to Marilyn Starling. I think she does a beautiful job with that catalog. So thank you to her. Our CNA program is starting up February third, and we have some slots available. So if anybody is interested in that, give us a call or send us an email and we'll get you started. We have a program called, it's a book discussion group, and it was designed for new readers or adult literacy students originally back in the day, so to speak. But it's a great opportunity for students, our academic students, to come together, whether they're a basic reader or a college preparation student, to have an opportunity to sort of find their voice in a humanities discussion. And Carol Trimble, if anybody knows her, she's an excellent professor who's very sensitive and kind, and she's facilitating that. So it gives people a taste of college, whether they're learning how to read or speak English or getting ready for college. So that starts, that's a monthly group, and the first session is the end of this month. Last fall, we took a break on our technology offerings to sort of take a step back. I don't find it very easy to offer effective technology training, because everybody comes with a different background and a pace of learning and style of learning and platforms. And so we took a break, and I worked with, one-on-one with several different students of different sort of demographics to sort of tease out how to develop that program in a more effective way. And we have, I counted them out and I put it in here in my report, but we have about thirty courses, workshops and courses over the course of this spring. So we pretty much have something for everybody. As I say in my report, you know, some people want it for workforce training, and some people want to see the photos that they take with their camera. And so there's even a course that's called Where Are the Photos? So the real exciting news, in my opinion, is that we have been working, really, the month of December. It's all come together quite quickly with SCORE, the Senior Core of Retired Executives, and Swanson, Terry Swanson from Swanson Consulting, and Kitty Barbie from Barbry Business Services. And now our partner and sponsor is Machia Savings Bank, and we're launching Small Business Academy. It's going to be nine sessions over the course of February, March, and April, with some great dynamic speakers, where I actually have a meeting tomorrow to finalize all the details. But the first month is marketing and getting your program out there, your business out there. And in March, it's kind of human resources and leadership versus management and sort of how to build a culture in your organization. And finally, it's sort of the nuts and bolts of running a business and from the legal aspect to payroll and all those kind of financial things. So I think it's a really exciting pilot project, so stay tuned for more information on that. I think our first session is going to be the school board meeting night next month. So they'll be upstairs, because they're going to be meeting in the auditorium. So that's pretty exciting. One thing that isn't on here that I just want to mention is that I'm really excited about our ESL program. I started to talk about that at my last meeting. And there are about seven ESL students that are very regular, so much so that they need more. And so we're actually going to be able to offer at eight fifteen in the morning, two days a week, and then two evenings a week, we're having ESL classes, which I'm thrilled about. And we're also collaborating with the ESL program in the district to have a community, international community supper in March, the end of March. And we hope that people will come and bring, if they're not from another country, you know, bring something that's part of their heritage. And so we're looking forward to a community event to bring together all the people in our community to celebrate all the people that live here. So, thank you. Any questions?
So Annie, I got home, I had about an hour at home before I came to this meeting, and this was in my mailbox. So I spent most of that hour going through the catalog. And I really hope that people who get this in their mail will, you know, some people are likely to say, oh, you know, adult ed, I don't have time for that, or, yeah, there's nothing there that would relate to my interests. But if you start, if you actually spend some time going through it, you're gonna, I think you're very likely to get, to have your interest piqued in so many of these classes. And that Small Business Academy was something I was very interested in until I saw that it was on Tuesday nights. But that's okay, because there's also beekeeping. Intermediate Spanish, which maybe that might be something I could do. There's a brewing class, brewing beer. There's bridge, there's all those technology courses you mentioned. I mean, not that this would appeal to me, but at this stage in my life, but foster-parent information. I mean, this thing is, I mean, there's so many things in here that are just really going to enrich our community, and I hope people at least will open this and go through it and see what happens after that.
That's one of the challenges. You can't do anything more but put it in their mailbox. We used to have it as a format like a newspaper, and I switched to a catalog, because more people keep a catalog than keep a newspaper. It's more expensive, but to me it's worth it, because I don't look at any newspaper things that come into my mailbox. I put it right into the wood stove.
No, it's very nicely done, and a beautiful picture on the cover.
That is something that my colleague, esteemed colleague Marilyn labors over the cover every year. It's a big deal. Thank you.
Thanks.
I love it. I just want to mention too, that, you know, I've seen a lot of things, people saying, we need to, we need to teach our kids cooking. We need to teach our kids accounting. We need to, da, 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 da. It's all here. All those courses that they talk about that they're saying, well, you should teach us in high school. Well, first of all, we do teach quite a bit in high school. But beyond that, the life skills that people need, they are accessible and they're right here in our town. And if you feel like that's for you or your child... And if you feel like that, that's for you or your child, we have someone for that. You know, it's, you can succeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Higgins?
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. Let's start off tonight by talking again about the ESD Lunchbox Program. I reported at last month's meeting that we had a number of very generous donors who sent money in to support students and families in need. And just wanted to follow up this month, because we continue to receive some donations. And it's nice to be able to report that the monies that have committed thus far have funded over three hundred and fifty meals for students and families in need. And we very much appreciate those of you who have donated. And certainly, we still have students in need, so if there are people who still want to support our students, we would be happy to continue that trend. But again, thank you very much. You know, it's been an interesting winter. Every year, I go through the schools and I get students saying, "Hey, Mr. Higgins, how about a storm day?" Still get a little bit of it now, but that's extended out into the community. Going grocery shopping, a young man named Colby asks me every time he sees me, "Are we going to have a storm day this week?" I'll come back to that in just a second. But I always give an update in January. As of today, we've used one storm day this year out of the three that we've allocated. So if we were to stop right now, the last student day would be two years early on the calendar. It would be June 16th. Now, for those of you who are banking on that date, check the forecast for this coming Thursday. And Colby, if you're out there along with your protege Bailey, you guys might get your wish this week. But again, in all seriousness, with regard to the calendar, Hancock County superintendents are working on the 2021 calendar right now, and we're going to talk about that a little bit later on in the agenda. Mrs. Lewis was up here a little bit earlier, and I swear to goodness, she's not a day over twenty-nine. But I thought in her presentation, with the energy that she was showing, she mentioned something about liking it so much here.
Not wanting to--
I heard her say that.
You did hear her say that?
I say that, yeah, she said that.
While she's, while she's contemplating that, I will say that officially, because she did retire last month, right?
Well, she didn't retire, she announced--
She announced it.
She's still here.
Moving past that. With the announcement of the recent retirement of Mrs. Lewis, we are finalizing next steps in our search for her replacement. We anticipate having the Search Selection Advisory Committee formed and the position posted over the next couple of weeks. And as we move forward through that process, our intent is to have the search and selection process completed so that we can bring a successor to the board for consideration at our April board meeting. You heard Mrs. Sergeant mention one of her new staff members, Amanda Day, who joins us as the Evening Coordinator and HISA examiner. Also Andrea Reed has joined us as a bus driver. And Erin Morrison, who's been in EdTech at Ellsworth High School, has transferred to HCTC. And in closing, retirement, long time coming. Charlie Pearpon, Assistant Director of Maintenance, has been with the school department twenty-plus years, and has decided that this June, he is going to enter the world of retirement. We certainly appreciate his service to the district, and he's done a wonderful job. That concludes my report, because I think what you really want to get to is our presentation tonight. If you want to hear, but if you have any questions, I would entertain them. Thank you.
Thanks.
Community reports? There's no old business, another new business, staff and student presentation.
Yeah, we will turn it over to our VPA Academy.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. We're very honored to be presenting our wonderful program here. My name is Leah Olson. I teach ceramics, foundations, jewelry, ceramics, all that stuff, all in the round. And I've been in the system for probably six years. Been teaching for about twenty-five. And it's been very wonderful to hear all of the reports made by our administrators, the dedication and report for everybody that works so hard at helping our students become independent and happy and long learners, lifetime learners. I came into the school system after I was, I was teaching in Hamden, and I met Rebecca. We were both in the main arts assessment initiative for the state. And we were, talk about piloting. We were the first group to be piloting arts assessment in the state and through RG Nestor. And Rebecca and I, we were roommates a couple of times. And she said something about this academy thing that, you know, she said, "Well, you know, you know, if you ever think about leaving Hamden and thinking about coming over to Ellsworth, I think there might be a job opening." So I was curious, and so I thought, "Wow, a system that really supports the arts." I came to the school, I saw the facilities, and I just was blown away. And this is coming from moving into Hamden Academy, which was a fifty, fifty-five million dollar school. Brand-new school, and I was fortunate enough to be there. But the facility in Ellsworth just lent itself very well to three-dimensional arts, two-dimensional arts, theater, music. I mean, it was just such a perfect place to come and work. So, long story short, I'm here, and I still am here, and I love it here. It is, it is, I, I love it. It's, I've been in different school systems, and I don't think I've ever felt so supportive. And when teachers feel supportive, students feel supported. And so Rebecca Wright, I have to say, this academy was definitely her baby. And, and I just listened. And we, Miss Westfall at the time, and we just kind of hashed all of this information out. And it is an evolvement, it is something that keeps going. It is, it's nothing etched in stone, it is something that is evolving. But what I've discovered is that it is a very special thing. And what I've seen with students and how they work together, and how they leave and how they come back, it is just a really inspiring piece of education here. It's very special. I would like to introduce Jasmine Ireland. I will, I'm gonna, I'm gonna click the little thing, but I want to just do this. So Jasmine Ireland, she teaches a theater, she teaches public speaking and dance. We're very fortunate to have Jasmine on board, this is her second year. And her energy is, doesn't come, it's, it's, you know, the apple doesn't fall far from the tree. Okay? From, Mrs. Wright. She's been wonderful. Yamar Gunnel-Briggs is our two-dimensional teacher here, and this is also her second year. And she is doing a lovely job teaching drawing, painting, digital art. Her passion is, is definitely wonderful, her care for the students, and the way that she is happy and so eager to help students and the facility communicating our program. And Jamie Colandro, and he teaches music, as you know. And he has been wonderful in, in getting students on board in all the festivals and the organization that has to go with that. And I'm new to this leadership position, I have to tell you. Never, you know, I'm learning more and more about theater and music. It's not been something that I know a whole lot about, but I am learning all the time. And that's something that I am, I'm very passionate about and curious about. And so here we go. I hope this works. Okay, so our mission statement rationale. Our mission of the Visual and Performing Arts Academy, the VPA at Ellsworth High School, is to provide a rigorous, comprehensive and technology-infused arts program that will prepare our students for post-secondary education, career and other creative fields, and instill a lifelong appreciation for the arts. Each year, five to fifteen students choose visual and performing arts as their lifelong passion. We have had students travel from far away, as Castine, Cherryfield and Bangor, to participate in our program. The VPA Academy capitalizes on our already successful offerings while adding additional rigor, coursework and providing flexibility in scheduling to make it possible for many to choose this honor's pathway, whether they pursue the visual performing arts as a major or not. Okay, and with that, I would like to introduce Jasmine.
Hi. Thank you for having us tonight. You will see in front of you, there is our VPA brochure. This is what we hand out to prospective students, students that are already attending our high school, eighth-grade students. I think we printed two hundred and fifty of these today that are going out with guidance to be given to students throughout the county. And you will also see a copy of one of our students' capstone projects. Her book is there on the table for you. You will meet several of our alumni, as well as current students tonight. And as generous as I am, that is my signed copy, so I'd like that back. So in terms of the academy, you'll see here a list of what is required for successful completion of the academy. We talk in the mission statement about rigor, and it certainly is that. Students go through an application process where they write an essay of intent. They provide us a transcript, they get references. It's, it's a very formal commitment that they are making. And learning that process of, "How do I apply to something? How do I apply for a job? How do I apply to college?" If they are accepted, they then sign a contract, and the parents sign their contract. They know exactly what they're signing on for. They'll take a VPA seminar course that is required of all students, regardless of their discipline. You'll hear a little bit more about that from Mr. Colandro later. They complete an internship, which we will talk about more as well, and you'll get to hear from some of the students about that. They complete a capstone, which is the culmination of all of their work. All of these pieces are meant to sort of build to that point of the capstone where they're really taking ownership of their learning and creating something that is independent. We certainly oversee it, but I think it's, it's a wonderful moment that we see. They really have a choice in their learning. That's something that I think is a key component to the academy, is that, you know, they are, they are driving these projects. They are pursuing a passion. We offer what is called VPA Real World Credit, I'll talk about that. They are journaling, they are doing research papers. You'll see some examples of their professional websites. Each student leaves with a Wix website that they can send to a college. Here's the link to my page. And we've seen colleges be really impressed with students coming out with that kind of portfolio and ability to represent themselves. And finally, they are required to complete Academy Assistance. These are community service hours that they complete within the visual performing arts programs. And that can be, "Hey, can you come help clean out the costume closet so we pass the fire inspection?" That can be volunteering to help another student during their capstone. You'll hear more about that as well. So those are all of the pieces of the puzzle that they work through during their time with us in academy. I did it. Students, as I said, have choice. There are a number of areas of concentration that students can choose to focus on, and each of those is broken down. There are certain requirements within each of those concentrations. So they can focus on visual art, theater dance, music, either vocal or instrumental, musical theater, or media communications in partnership with HCTC. Here is everything we offer, and it's a lot. And you're hearing a lot about academy tonight, but also, we have so many students that are enrolled in these, you know, in the VPA classes. It goes well above the academy or outside of the academy. So this is everything that's offered. I'm not going to read all of this to you. And it's interesting, it, it, as Mrs. Olson mentioned, it fluctuates. We see, there's a great demand for public speaking this year. Everyone has realized the value of that outside of a school setting and outside of a performance setting. So these things sort of flux and are flexible, and as artists, that's what we do. We adapt to those changes. So then I think I am introducing a current student. She is a senior this year. She is a VPA Academy student whose concentration is musical theater. She's going to talk to you a little bit about curriculum and her experience with that. Amelia Hayden, would you come up, please?
Hi. So I am a musical theater, I have a musical theater concentration. And I think that one of the most important things that I've learned from taking VPA classes is that in addition to the VPA classes, we learn so much more with, like, in literature and history and science. And I think that that is so important for not only people enrolled in the VPA, but also people who take VPA classes as electives. And I've seen freshmen come in this year, and they are in a dance class, and they just like open up so fast to all of us and to Miss Ireland. And I think that it's a, it's a place for creativity that's safe, and they feel like they're welcome, and they can express themselves in, in a way that we won't, like, no one will judge them. And I think that, I think that, like, the VPA is like a home for people. Which I, it's really important, because you, there are so many people in the high school that are there for you. And this, the VPA Academy offers a place for a home. And I think that that's super important. And I came from Surrey Elementary School, which was so small, and I didn't know many people. And so coming into the VPA and doing show choir and doing the Fall Musical and stuff, I, I felt more at home automatically, which I think is so important. And I had people that I knew and that I could reach out to when I didn't know anyone else in my classes, but I knew them from auditions, and I sat with them. So I think that, I think that it's really important for people to take VPA classes, even if they aren't in the VPA Academy, because they get an experience that isn't, that's hands-on, and it isn't like a lecture. So, which, which is also good, but-- Sometimes it is a lecture. But, but especially with art classes, it's so hands-on, and I think that you learn a lot of history and literature through that, and it's, it's more of like a physical representation of it, rather than looking at a picture on a board, which I think is, I think is important for the learning process. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
More of me. Okay, so one unique thing about VPA Academy is we have some very driven students. If they're willing to make a commitment at this stage of their education to say, "Yes, I want to specialize in this. Yes, I want to pursue this." We know that, that a lot of them are seeking experience outside of the schoolroom. So we offer what is a real-world contract. So realizing that these students are going to search these things out. We have students who, and you're going to meet one shortly, who go above and beyond, and they're taking classes outside of Ellsworth High School. They're spending six weeks in a pre-college program. They are, you know, enrolling to go to Haystack for weeks at a time and hone their craft. And we think it's really important to honor those outside experiences. We definitely are looking for diversity in these people, you know? We definitely are looking for diversity in these people, you know, as artists, and not just, you know, we are Ellsworth VPA, and that's the way we see things. Being open to these other influences is very important, and we want to encourage that. So we have some students who have chosen to attend accredited programs, and we're very careful to make sure that those align with what, you know, our standards are. But we do, we will give them elective credit. And so, the lovely book you see in front of you is created by Emma Henry. She graduated last year. She is currently attending Ringling, no, Ringling was where the program was, Leslie. But she spent her summer at Ringling working on illustration and gained credit for that. So I'd like to introduce Emma and let her talk a little bit about that experience.
Hi, I'm Emma, and I graduated from Ellsworth High School in 2019. My distinction in the VPA was 2D art. And as Jasmine described, I had a unique experience in which I attended a pre-college at Ringling College of Art and Design focusing on illustration and drawing for animation. And I was able to put my experience and hours there toward my VPA extinction using the half-credit that goes toward an elective. All I had to do was fill out a form. These real-world experiences are different from real-world internships and real-world capstones. With this experience, you are independently educating yourself outside of the VPA. You could go to a summer camp or go to haystack like I did. The possibilities are endless. You just need to speak with your advisor about it, and it's good to go. I really appreciate my teachers bringing up the possibility when I told them I was going to attend this pre-college. I had an amazing time at my real-world experience, the pre-college, and I am grateful for the recognition I received from the VPA. I displayed artwork from Ringling in my own little kiosk at school, which was really fun. The inclusion of a real-world experience opportunity to further oneself within the VPA encourages students to pursue art outside the walls of Ellsworth High School and also make important connections that could be part of their future. There is also a VPA scholarship that you can apply for if you're having a summer experience, which is very helpful. I just generally think that it broadens your horizons in terms of your personal art practice and how you can pursue your art in the future. And I also want to thank the VPA and this allowance for a real-world experience, because it sets a professional standard that will be evident in your career moving on. Yeah, so if any student. Yeah, take advantage of this VPA real-world experience. Approach your teachers, your advisors. They all want you to succeed, and they will give you resources if you ask for them. Everything you learn in and out of the VPA will strengthen your current art practice, and the VPA is a great standing point for branching out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Whoops, too hot for this thing. Thank you again for having us. I'd first like to just echo what my colleagues said. This is my seventeenth year as an educator, but the last four in Ellsworth have really been a rewarding and eye-opening opportunity for me to see that real support does exist in the arts, which could get a little discouraging if you're in the wrong community. And I really praise everything the Ellsworth community does to support the VPA and the arts and the flourishing of our students and faculty in the arts. I'd like to talk about our course that we offer, VPA History Seminar. This is one of my favorite points. I mean, you'll hear about the capstones and the internships, which are wonderful. But from the teaching side of things, this is one of my favorite parts that our district offers. And it's a four-discipline course, which is taught in, it's team-taught in both the visual and performing arts, taught by myself, Mrs. Olson, and Miss Ireland. What we do is we choose before the program starts a historical period. We've done the Renaissance since I've been here and the Romantic period, and really dive into not only the culture and the history of society, but how it rotates around the arts visually, musically, dance and theater, and how it impacts the next, the next stage in time, if you will. Then it's related, of course, to current events and the arts movements and forms. And this is a course that can be taken more than once, and it's not just restricted to our VPA Academy students. We've seen a lot of other art students take it for the experience, for an art credit, and we've seen students that you wouldn't normally see in these disciplines, and it's a really refreshing thing. So we begin with an overview of the time period. Students will research, they'll provide knowledge of discoveries in a transparent way to all three teachers. You know, what, how, the way it works is they'll pretty much come to us for two, two-and-a-half weeks at a time, and then we pass them off to the next person, music, and then the visual art, and then the theater. And then for any kind of assessment or presentation or anything, we all come together and we, you know, we view and we critique in a very transparent way that applies to all three disciplines within the course. And we criticize through different lenses about the work to complete, which is necessary for improving a global perspective of the knowledge of the time period. And again, you know, the, one of the more really remarkable things here was to see as a teacher is a student that, you know, I know is a wrestler and a football player and a fellow Yankee and Giant fan, that's all we talked about throughout, you know, the thing, composed a thirty-two-bar lullaby, not only, you know, technically sound, but really pleasing to the ear that, you know, they're like, oh, wow, you know, I really didn't know you had that in you. And then, you know, even within the arts, a student that I know to be a fabulous singer and a fabulous actress and a fabulous dancer, composed a bust of, was it herself? Wasn't herself, right?
No.
Yeah, just, you know, a bust that she worked on for months out of her head that's still in our gallery. And it's amazing to see that just come out of the students and that creative energy really flourish, just even for a half-year course. So I would like to introduce one of my advisees, Ian Brenner Simpson, who is going to talk about, maybe a little more about the seminar and just about, again, his experience with the academy. So Ian?
Hello. So yeah, the VPA History Seminar. This was a great class. I took this junior year? Yeah, so I took this last year. I'm a music focus here at Ellsworth. Yeah, Colandro pretty much summed it up. But coming from a student's perspective, this class was fantastic. I never really did much with performing, actually, I didn't do anything with performing arts, you know, theater and stuff. Nothing with art before this class. And this class, it takes everything and smooshes it together, and you can't, you can't take this class without doing it all. And I think that's such an interesting way of approaching the arts, because they are so interconnected in the real world, and giving students the chance to experience that and learn how to do that. The final project we did in the class, I did with a friend, and we were supposed to do, we were supposed to combine all three elements, and we didn't really do anything with, like, the visual art. But we ended up doing a live production of a song from one of our favorite artists onstage with all of our electronic equipment. So that was the performing arts and music all kind of together. So yeah, it's a great way to combine everything. And like Colandro said, it drags people in. It, like this boy Chuck, like he was mentioning, he was a football player. He had no, well, supposedly no artistic flair until he joined this class, and now he's writing music and, you know, making paintings and stuff. So, and this applies to all the other classes, too. The, these classes really bring out the arts in students, which I think is great. I realized earlier today that I'm kind of taking this class again this year, but in three different classes. I'm taking Intro to Theater with Miss Ireland. I'm taking 2D One with Miss Briggs, and then Guitaric History with Colandro. So it keeps going after this class, you know, there's so many other classes that are available that you can broaden your horizons with. I'm also the composer, I write the music for our one-acts competition in the spring, and that is another connection to this class that I was able to make, learning things, especially in the Intro to Theater class as well, learning about theater, acting, the way it works. That helps me as a composer to connect with the actors more, kind of understand what's going on onstage. And then I'm, for my capstone project for the VPA program, I'm working on an original album. And I was working with Emma on my album cover. She drew the album cover for that. So working with all these different facets of the visual and performing arts industry is really an amazing experience, and this class offers that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings. Hello. I'll change this slide. I'll be talking about another component to VPA Academy, which is the internship. VPA students who are in their junior years start defining their artistic journey around their interests such as art, music, and theater. Part of our role is to guide and encourage students to connect with professionals who can help students to gain experience outside of our school community. The internship opportunity helps VPA students to gain in-depth knowledge in the area of their interest, which also defines, which also helps them to refine their ideas for their senior-year capstone project. Students' responsibilities for the VPA internship in their junior year is to create a project proposal and share it with their VPA advisor. And if approved, and if the person of interest is found in the community, then they start their internship process. Once they start their internship, they start keeping weekly journals, and these journals are created on Google Document, which is shared with their advisor, so advisor can often check in the progress. And when necessary, the advisor and the student meet as needed to answer any questions and guide the student through the process. At the end of the internship, students gather all of their knowledge and create, and write a research paper up to three pages long. Then students also gather all of the digital, all of the work they created in a digital platform, such as website, or they create a Google document or folder, so we can also keep track of the progress. At the end of their internship, they create a public presentation to our department so we can see their progress. Lastly, they also write self-reflection, which also comes from their weekly journal entries. The internship program is aimed to help students develop new and improved skills that are relevant to students' artistic discipline. Independent research skills and professional communication and networking skills are some of the skills that we are aimed to develop. Also, students are learning to create and keep professional portfolio to, and also public presentation, and they learn time management skills. So I have two students. One finished her internship last year, and another one who is still working on her internship. First, I'm going to introduce Evelyn Howie, who did her internship at Design Group Collaborative in Ellsworth. Second, I will introduce Haley Tedeschi, who is still working on her internship, and her internship is to learn drawing and painting techniques from a professional artist in the community. So first, I will introduce Evelyn, and then Haley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Evelyn. So last year, I did an internship at Design Group Collaborative right up the road, and that's an architecture firm. And so VPA Academy, I'm in it for the 2D art part of it. And so I wanted to incorporate also, like, my interest further in life, so I'm interested in architecture. And so I thought it was really cool that I was still able to incorporate something a little bit more different, but still connected. So me and Miss Olson, once I figured out I wanted to do something with architecture, we started researching local firms around, and we found that one. And it was really exciting to meet architects that were close by and see what the type of things they do around Ellsworth and all of their things that they make. And so one of my projects was I measured their whole building, which you can see on some of the pictures up there. It was a very messy process, because I had to do all the dimensions of the desks and the wall heights and all of that. And so I learned the scale, and then I learned how to draw that down on paper, and it took many tries of doing the blueprints and many remeasurements. And so I was able to create, like, final blueprints, which made me feel like I kind of already had a head start going in, well, going into college, because I have this background knowledge of things that I've learned from an actual architecture firm. So each week, I would also write in my little journal everything I did, and then me and Miss Olson would have monthly meetings. And then for the research paper, looking back on the journal really helped, because I was able to see everything I did week by week. I didn't have to just try to scramble my brain, being like, what did I do? Like, I had it all written down, which really helped. And so at the end of the year, I had to do a presentation, and I actually ended up doing that presentation to the architects, showing them everything that I learned and everything that helped me. And it really made me reflect on how impactful VPA Academy can be, because I feel like it's going to help me further in life, and having this background knowledge is really going to be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Haley, and I'm currently interning with a woman named Wendolee O'Brien. She is an artist in the Seven Arts Gallery located in Flexit. And this internship has given me the opportunity to help develop my skills. We're currently going over charcoal values, watercolor, and graphite. So working one-on-one with this mentor is a very big opportunity, because receiving feedback from a professional is very helpful. And after meeting with her, I take a note in my computer. Yes, the journal. To keep track of these meetings, and eventually, this will help me to write my research paper, and it will help with my capstone project. I think that this will be very helpful for future students in the VPA Academy. Always receiving feedback from professionals is amazing. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So in, the internship is the preparation for what is their final culminating experience, which is their capstone. And this is the big flashy part. So the purpose of the VPA capstone project is to provide an experience that allows students to learn about themselves while pursuing their passion and moving it from an idea or a dream to becoming an actuality. The project allows students the opportunity to apply and demonstrate interdisciplinary skills and knowledge while investigating a specialized area of interest. The word "capstone" suggests a completion, an ending, an appropriate topping off. The capstone project synthesizes previous learning, offers new interaction with ideas and people, results in a showcased product, and submits the student in charge of the project to review and evaluation by a committee. The work of the student must be documented sufficiently so that reflection and presentation may take place. It is hoped that through this project, students will discover more about their individual talents and take pride in demonstrating their learning as they prepare for a successful future. Capstone experiences and relationships empower students to develop their leadership, skills, sense of character, and self-esteem. The capstones are really, truly special. They are entirely student-generated. We do not look at a student and say, why don't you do this? They have to come to us, they have to pitch their idea, they have to propose that idea and get that idea approved. It is an incredibly independent project, which isn't to say we aren't involved, but they are driving these projects. So, these are last year's capstones. We have everything from a student who ended up taking one of the jazz ensembles to We have everything from a student who ended up taking one of the jazz ensembles to competition as that ensemble's conductor. We had students write basically what was an SNL show, short comedy sketches. We had a student write his own play and do a staged reading. We had a student produce, adapt, direct, and basically design his own adaptation of a book, and that was a public performance. You'll hear from him in just a moment. We had several art exhibits. Olivia Dyer completely redesigned the café area, and we threw a big 50's sock hop dinner, where we had milkshakes and cheeseburgers. And I will say, as someone who walks through that cafeteria daily, that impact is there. It's lasting. Those kids fight over who's going to sit in the cool booths. It's really fun to see that legacy of their work. And finally, Grace Hi, who did a retrospective of the thirty-some-odd years of the Mad Jesters. She was, she's a nursing student, so performing wasn't where she wanted to go, but she really wanted to honor the history of the program that she had come from, and did this huge, beautiful display in our gallery of all of that work. You're going to hear from Cody. So, we did a couple of profiles. These are folks you're meeting tonight. Cody Harper, his internship was as a technical director at Ellsworth Middle School for their theater programs, so that he had that skill set moving forward to manage other technicians when he produced his own show. His capstone, he wrote and directed and produced a play based on an original adaptation of a book. He is currently a theater major at the University of Southern Maine, and just received a work study in the Scene Shop, which I'll let him tell you about. I want to bump forward a little. This was Emma's student profile, what she's doing now, you've heard from her, and you'll see more about this, but if you look and click this lovely little link. And each of these students has this, every capstone student you see. Emma has a very professional website. You can look at all of the examples of her work, you can contact her, she will tell you a little bit about herself, that's her animation, those are commissioned works that happened within a community. She was commissioned to design posters for the grand, for their public, I mean, it goes on and on. What these kids are accomplishing is pretty amazing. Now, let's see if I can get back to where we were. The other phenomenon that sort of, oh, no, don't go there. The other phenomenon that happened last year, which I, it's only my second year, but we ended up with almost a capstone season. All of these kids were together, helping each other. They become this sort of cohort. You know, it's like when you do your dissertation, and all of you are in the library all night long, you know? And these kids were just constantly giving of themselves, sharing their talents. Yes, I'll make your poster for your show, because I'm a visual artist. And it really was this huge celebration, and there was all this buzz in the school and the community that all of these projects were sort of happening at once. So, we really look forward to growing that. We now have, there are currently nineteen students enrolled in the VPA Academy, so it's only growing. So, I'm going to turn it over to Cody Harper.
Hi, I'm Cody Harper. I graduated from Ellsworth High School in 2019 with a VPA diploma for Theater Dance. To get this diploma, I completed an internship and capstone project. For my internship, I was the technical director at the middle school during their productions. For my capstone, I wrote and adapted and directed the advanced theater show Lemonade Snick is a Series of Unfortunate Events: The Bad Beginning. This experience was very challenging and really helpful, and really helped me understand what I was getting myself into with a theater degree. This entire experience was overlooked by Olson and Ireland, and they were really helpful resources with my many questions. This project is supposed to be somewhat independent, independent, to show you, to show you have understood and what you've, what you've learned the past four years. It was a very trial-by-fire experience, by how I had to be in charge of the entire production and make sure everything was cohesive, cohesive and fit together. I also was in charge of the students in the class, because they all had to have production assignments, and most were also in the show. These students were in charge of costumes, lights, sound, music, publicity, hair, makeup, and props. Out of thirteen productions assignments, twelve were done by students. We spent weeks in the classroom or on stage creating a piece that meant something to all of us, working together as a sort of mini theater company to put out a show that no one had done before. All of their work and mine paid off by how more than a hundred people attended opening night. This, to me, was very fulfilling, and to have a supportive community to show my work to. This experience and program was my favorite part of school. It helped create a community, community where we could express ourselves and not be judged while learning about things we love most. Now that I'm attending college with the experience, working with set designers during shows in high school and working through the, this curriculum, as well as making my own set, I have been offered a job in the Scene Shop at USM because of the experience I seem to, I seem to have coming into my first semester directly out of high school. This department really helps students reach their goals and have a firm grasp on the fields they want to go into. The VPA department truly helped me in supporting my art and showing me how to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, marketing. When Jasmine came on board, she thought, hmm, a checklist would be great. So, actually, Jasmine created this, and, you know, and that is super helpful, because it simplifies everything. Unfortunately, Olivia, who did the, the, the capstone in the diner, she couldn't be here tonight. But, this is something that she checked off every one of these bullet points. The poster, they designed the poster, they talk about the date that they, they have to think about things way in ahead, way ahead, like months in advance, because they have to think about, okay, well, things could fail up, and, you know, it, it really began to be, she had to talk to the people in the cafeteria, there was this ongoing communication with administration. We worked together with the social media event, social media post, school-wide email. She learned how to do, and not a lot of kids know how to do that. I mean, they get the emails, and we're lucky if they read them sometimes, but, you know, it's, it's, it's being persistent. So, it's a very, very good skill to get the word out. School announcements, she wrote the, the announcements for when it was about to happen, the documentation of the final project, and the thank you notes to appropriate persons. For the opening night, for example, of the Eagle Pride Diner opening, she wrote a speech, and she thanked everybody that was involved, everybody. I mean, and it was, it was so sincere and very to the heart. But, these are things that we feel as a department that this is important, because in life, you, if you're in the arts, you, you really do need to promote yourself. You need to, I don't want to say sell yourself, but you have to get out there, you have to be persistent, and you also have to have a thick skin, and you have to, and just go for it. And so, the marketing piece of it, we find that that is very helpful for students to learn and do. And for what that is, we talked about the digital portfolios that are here. But, I will say that, I don't know what the, I don't know what the time is, but, I'll hand it over for Yana.
So, in addition to marketing, Emma Henry, Olivia Dyer, and Emma McKechnie also contacted Ellsworth American and published an article about their VPA capstone project, which was a great achievement. So, for the, for the digital portfolios, students in their senior year are also required to create a website that professionally displays and displays the visuals and write-ups about the process and outcome of the academy experience. VPA students create paintings, sculptures, music video, and theater performances, so a website is a great tool to display all of, all of that. So, in their website, students are required to include their biography, artist statement, and high-quality images, videos, sounds from their internship and capstone project. I'd like to show you Olivia Dyer's website. So, she created a very organized website with what she draws her inspiration from, and very beautiful images. In the section that says "about," she also have a beautiful picture and a biography, but what she also have is her CV, which is downloadable, so if I click on this PDF, I will be able to see all of what she did on my computer before even I maybe call her for interview, if I was an employer. So, so she have her skills and experience, and everything is here. This is, this is great. Also, if I go here, so she professionally categorized all of her work, illustrations, printmaking, ceramic work from Mrs. Olson's class, VPA Academy work, and AP concentration work. These are some of her works that she created in AP art class. So, I think websites are great tools for students to display all of their work and share it with people who, who they talk to. So, I will leave it here.
So, just real quick, this is an example of our department's common rubric. We work together as a department in meetings outside of school and during PLC time to really streamline this to be used across all disciplines to assess if the students have met the VPA standards. And the rubric becomes, you can see, you know, it's got the performance indicators and the content literacy rubric. And as you can see in the next one, it becomes a lot more specific as the academy continues into internships and capstone projects. So, oops, oh, oh. It becomes more fine-tuned as we go along to, and as, you know, as Ms. Ireland would say, and it explains fully when she was talking about exactly what a capstone is, the wording is all there to make sure that the students really understand what work is going to go in, and exactly what performance indicators and learning targets we're going to be looking for with every assessment they do within their internships and the capstones. And this is all based upon, upon the common rubric that they do early on in their high school career in the VPA, excuse me, in the VPA Academy. So, Ms. Olson, you want to bring us home here?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. So, colleges, majors, and careers. So, beyond what they're learning with us, they are going to these colleges, all of these colleges, University of Maine, Berkeley.
We have a student who just got into Berkeley.
Yes, so we're very excited. You know, and so, the impact is huge. The majors, these are the majors, art education, music education, theater education, experimental theater, graphic design. You know, and they used to be, they used to say that, you know, if you go into arts, you, you know, it was always kind of frowned upon, like, you're not going to get a job. Well, these, those days are over. I mean, it is not, you can get a job in the arts, and you can be happy following your passion, and you can be happy following your curiosity. And we also have current students, oh, jeez, Mike, it's, what's going on here? Careers like, we have students that have been through the academy, that are now working in jobs. We have a technical director, a theater teacher, you know, a photographer, director of education, newspaper illustrator, actor. I mean, these, these are jobs beyond their majors. We also have now, this is exciting, you probably already know this, but the impact of this school's influence with these young people have now become to the state level. And Jamie Anderson now is the department's, he's, actually, he came to, what, he came to our Winter Arts Festival?
Jason Anderson.
Jason, okay, Jason Anderson. And now, we're finding that our slideshow is on the DOA. So, this slideshow, and, or, so people are talking about this work, and we're very excited about it. And so, it's begun in just like the last five years. We've had twenty-eight successful graduates. Of those, nineteen students are now pursuing higher education degrees in the visual or performing arts, or have careers in their respective fields. This year, five students will graduate with a VPA distinction and have already been accepted to prestigious programs at Berkeley, Bard, Roger Williams, and New England School of Communications. There are currently nineteen underclassmen enrolled in the academy. So, I know this was much longer than what you expected. Thank you for the bragging rights. We're very thankful for your support, and, and we don't get a chance to brag often. So, we really appreciate you listening to our stories and how we are really working hard at, we are working hard at helping students achieve what they would like to achieve. So, thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
I just have one quick question for the current EHS students who are here tonight, about your future plans. I know you mentioned one student's going to Berkeley, that's Berkeley School of Music, and that's EN, right? So, but the other three, Evelyn, do you have plans for next year?
I'm planning to study architecture. I don't know where I'm going yet, but I've applied to many other schools.
Okay. And Haley?
I'm going to study natural pathology medicine. I'm still looking at colleges recently.
Yep, and Amelia?
I have a few upcoming auditions for vocal performance programs.
Good luck with that. You've got a beautiful voice, I saw you in Addams Family, so. Well, great, and we know where Emma and Cody are going, because that was mentioned already. So, good luck to you two, and thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Just realized my purse is, like, weight over. I'm sorry.
Day two, first read of the 2020-2021 Ellsworth School Department calendar.
It's hard to say 2020-2021, isn't it? I've been practicing for a couple of hours just for tonight. Did send you the first, well, the final first draft of the 2021 calendar, just so the board and the community knows the process. Typically go through first reads, the first read comes here. While we're preparing the first read for you, we're also working collaboratively with other schools in Hancock County because we have some legal requirements with regard to CTE calendars. As many of you have heard before, we can have no more than five dissimilar days with sending high schools that go to HCTC, so we have that as one of our pieces. The other thing that we do is we ask for input from members of our staff. In past years, we've had our administrators send copies of the calendar out to staff members. What we, this year was send it out electronically to all staff members asking for input, and we're getting a great deal of that. Just a couple of things to share about the calendar that you have in front of you, or at least on your computers. Interestingly, it has the same corresponding dates as we've had for the past four or five years. If you're an historian, which I have been, working on this calendar, the dates actually correspond to the 15-16 calendar. And if you look at a couple of noteworthy pieces, one is, we will be starting with students prior to the Labor Day holiday. We did do that in 15-16. We also start with our staff members in the last full week of August. You notice that August 30th and 31st fall on a Sunday and Monday, but the last full week is our pre-service days. All of the other days run consistent with what we've had in past years. Some of the feedback we've been receiving thus far, and it's typically the same, it's around the November professional development days. We typically run with a number of our staff members enjoying having professional days, the Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving week, and we have a number of our staff that would like to see us split those days up and move them to different places in the calendar. So, we expect to see more of that feedback.
I have a question. I know that Career Technical Education, they have to have common calendars. Does it have to be common student days? Do we have to have common professional development days?
We're required to have common student days, but it facilitates the process if our professional development days are common. And Hancock County, actually, even before that law was put into place, did a real nice job of coordinating the calendar. So, for the most part, most of our districts share the majority of their professional development days, so that they're, if where you're going with this is, is there an opportunity to collaborate with other districts? There is. I'm not sure that's where you're going on, Mrs. Thomas.
No, no, I was just sort of curious, because when you look at the November Thanksgiving break there, I know that some schools have that as workshop days and some, some have it as student days, or have in, have in the past. That's why I was sort of curious, do we have, is, does that count in those five days that we have to be?
It, it does, because if, if, say, for example, we make the determination this year to have student days that week, HCTC will be open. So, if you have other schools that have professional development days, they may have to look at sending their students to HCTC, which creates problems in their calendar.
Okay, wasn't thinking of that.
As much as we'd like to make it Ellsworth only, we do have the CTE program, and we do have a law that requires that we have, again, no more than five dissimilar days. But, this is the first read. What we're looking for tonight is for the board to, first of all, answer any other questions that anybody has, but to approve a first read, we'll be gathering feedback over the next two, three weeks, coming back with some recommended changes, and hopefully have you approve it at your next meeting. I think that, Rob's rules of order would be motion second and then questions, but if as the chair you'd like to deviate from that, Mrs. Thomas, you could do that.
Apparently, I did.
I move that we approve the first read of the 2020-2021 Ellsworth School Department calendar.
Second.
Hearing none. All of those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Negotiations update.
I would like to defer to our personnel committee members to.
Well, Rob is the lead negotiator for one of the processes, and I'm the lead negotiator for the other, but I guess I can speak for both of us and say that we've begun collective bargaining with the teachers. Since our last school board meeting, we had our first session and then a second one, and we've got a next session scheduled for 27th of this month. And with the administrative assistance, we're continuing that process. We have a session scheduled.
Twenty-sixth.
I believe it's the, yeah, I don't have, I don't have my calendar ready, but I believe it's the 26th, yeah.
No, 26th is a Sunday.
Then it's not the 26th.
Twenty-second, maybe?
It is the 22nd.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds better. Anyway, that's coming up.
Budget update.
Budget update, yes. I did provide you with written copies tonight of a budget approval timeline. As you know, you as a board have already seen an overview of some of the major priorities and staffing at a recent workshop. The budget process started back in November of 2019, again, back in 2019, so long ago.
Last decade.
Last decade, yes. But that was initiation of the budget process in the district office, where we focused on updating staffing and personnel. District leadership team had their initial budget discussions, lengthy discussions, and individual principals and department heads working with their staff on their budgets. Those budgets were actually due this Monday, so with the budgets being due this Monday, we're now scheduling and having meetings where the individual department heads come and present to myself and Carolyn Heller, our business manager. And we ask a lot of questions in the first round of presentations with them to try to get their proposals lined up. And while we're doing that, we'll be working on scheduling similar presentations with our finance committee, which I believe is Mrs. Thomas, Mr. Hudson. And those will take place, for the most part, from February 7th through March 6th, and from March 6th through May 2020, we'll have multiple work sessions where finance committee will be working quite a bit. The entire board will receive updates at every monthly meeting, and for those of you who are newer on that, you'll probably get some written updates also. There'll be so much information, you'll, you'll be asking for even more. April and May, these dates have not been set yet, but there will be a formal presentation of the budget draft to the city council's finance committee and also at a board workshop as part of their budget work with all city departments. We typically, as a school board, present the final budget to you for your approval at the May meeting, which is May 12th. Then present, after you've approved it, to the city council at their meeting, which is tentatively scheduled for May 18th. And then the final step in the process is June 9th, 2020, which is the budget validation referendum. I think if you look at the vote last year, we're required to do that for another three years. So, that's just an overview of where we are, but the process is going very well. We actually are anticipating having a very rough first draft of an expenditure side of the budget by the middle of next week, which actually is pretty early, and it will be in advance of receiving subsidy information from the Department of Education. So, that's where we stand right now. Any questions from anyone? It's a fun process, we love it.
Item five, Hancock County Technical Center Facilities Feasibility Study Committee update. And I'm gonna request that we move to go to executive session.
I move that we enter executive session under one MRSA 20-A4056C for the purpose of discussion or consideration of the condition, acquisition, or the use of real or personal property permanently attached to real property or interests therein or disposition of publicly-held property for economic development, only if premature disclosures of the information would prejudice the competitive or bargaining position of the body or agency.
Request that the chair allow me to interject, not, not take the motion off the table, 'cause it was very well done. But, just a couple of things. One is, maybe a quick public piece, that the process for selecting the architect goes along extremely well. Processes moving forward, there's still a lot of excitement around the feasibility study and also the potential that lays out there in the future. The other thing I would recommend that the board do before we have a second is do calendar and closure, because this is the last item on your agenda.
Okay, I got it now.
If it's okay, we can keep, keep the motion where it is.
Yeah.
Finish everything else, then do the second and go into executive session.
Okay. Okay, so, calendar announcements. The Ellsworth School Board Workshop is on Tuesday, January 28th, at the conference room at 6 o'clock, and the next school board meeting is February 11th, 2020, at City Hall Council Chambers at 6:30. We can't determine.
No, but we can go into the second for executive session.
I would like to second.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Start that back formal.
What time is it, Mr. McCosian?
It is 8:10.